Good evening, welcome to Lawrence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the first, 2023. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Act of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person in the city council chambers remotely. You can follow us on our Zoom link and as well as our Lawrence City Council Facebook page and Lawrence City Council YouTube page. At this time, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy.
Present.
Counselor Delacruz noted as absent. Counselor Russell.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez noted as absent. Counselor Del Rosario.
Present.
Counselor Reyes noted as absent. Counselor Infante.
Present.
Counselor Vice President Reyes noted as absent. Counselor President Laplante.
Present. At this point, we're going to rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. I believe that Counselor Infante has some guests who are here this evening. Counselor Infante, would you wish to take the gavel?
Yes.
Well, okay. Rhetorically, take the gavel.
Okay, yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you, Counselor President. Tonight, I have three young girls, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. My little cousins, who've been asking me what the city councilors do. And they have not wanted, they did not want to leave my side today. They wanted to come and ask questions. So I would like to call up to the podium Sophia, Maya, and Adriana.
If you want to join us for the title of the meetings. I am the legal agent to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, my foundation and my God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, ladies. Highly unusual, I don't think we've ever had that done in our city's history, at least as far as I know, so we're focusing around tonight. So, thank you. At this point, we're going to start off with a very short public participation. We have one speaker. It is Mr. Malley. Mr. Malley, you know the game rules here. Two and a half minutes, two minutes, the buzzer rings. No individual counselors are supposed to address the chair. Go ahead.
Good evening, honorable members. In this important election year, we demand the best contract for Lawrence Police Officers now. Lawrence Police, if they impact the leadership, has done excellent job to protect our citizens. We demand the best contract and compensation for Lawrence Police Officers now. He has an honoration of proud to look at her September thirteenth each year, the day of the first responder appreciation. They stand united in support of Lawrence Police Officers Union, Senior Officer Union. Million times for our best PDW workers. We support your great union. We support our inspection department employees and the great union. We must hire more inspectors in this election year. We must declare August twenty eighth each year, the day of the Lawrence Publicist School Employees Appreciation Day. So we can say thank you to all best teachers and all Lawrence Publicist School employees. With the budget of $216 million, we must pay the best compensation to our Lawrence Publicist School employees. Remember your campaign promise, save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence. Only possible if we have the best contract for Lawrence Police now. Lawrence, one city on the go, we must be the best example for support of union rights for firefighters, PDW teachers, and police officers. We stand up united in the year of the election in support of Ray Lawrence Police Officers to get contract for Lawrence Police now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that is our final vote. Our final speaker for public participation. I will ask the clerk, please call the roll for Vice President De Sela Reyes.
Counselor Reyes. Present.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to budget and finance. Is our Vice Chair Levy, are you prepared to read the committee reports? We're going to go out of order because we do have folks that are here. So if there's no objection, I'm going to be looking for document two fifty-nine twenty-three. It's an authorization to expend grant funds for $10,000 that was put on by our fire chief, Morriari. So when you're ready, I did actually do a heads up on this vice chair, so I do realize that is a little unfair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So, I don't know, fifty-nine twenty-three is the authorization to expand the grant funds for $10,000 for toxins. Use reduction against the two, two week grant. That was submitted for Chief Brian Moriari from the Lawrence Fire Department and was sent to the county with their work. And basically, I do have to show up. One more second.
Motion made by the Vice Chair. I think it was seconded by Counselor Del Rosario, Counselor Del Rosario, discussion. See, and I failed to mention this at the beginning of the meeting, my apologies. With the mayor's absence for a couple of weeks, while I can continue to serve and function as the president and chair of the meeting, I am unable to take votes on matters this evening. So I just want the council to be aware that at this point going forward, any matters that are coming up, I will not be voting. So motions are made, properly seconded, either there's no discussion or call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. And to this point forward, the chair is not voting on any matters. She's looking at this one. Next document, Counselor Levy, Vice Chair Levy, is document two eighty-three twenty-three. There are individuals right here for that one, and that is the authorization to spend grant funds. Of the law, but they're not here.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so two eighty-three twenty-three. Madam Vice Chair.
I don't know, eighty-three twenty-three is the authorization to expand the grant funds in the amount of $58,000, $58,832. Flight twenty-four municipal road safety, NRS grant, was submitted by Rosa Estepa, Director of Support of thirty, Adelorens. Lawrence Police Department. Something wrong here. Adelorens Police Department. So it was handed with favorable recommendations, and I think he has a formal motion.
Motion is made, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Vice President Reyes, discussion. See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The next document, Madam Vice Chair, is two eighty-four twenty-three.
I don't know, eighty-four twenty-three is the authorization to expand grant funds in the amount of $53,700 and thirty-three. Flight nineteen, Edward Barney Memorial Justice, E A T, grant, was submitted to the full council as community report. And I made it as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion made by the Vice Chair, seconded by Vice President Reyes as a committee report, discussion. See none, oh, discussion, Counselor, Vice Chair.
I, I would like to. For Rosa.
Madam Vice Chair, this is the committee report, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What do you think? Thank you for coming today. The reason why it was in the committee report was because that we don't have all the information regarding the grants. And we request that, I guess, the city affirming and also the capo to be here to talk about what happened with this grant that is from the 2019.
Hi, what do you think?
Good evening. I think the question, or the question I received from Teresa was, what happens if the, if the department does not get council approval to spend the grant? Then the grant would be returned to the grant door agency. Chapter forty-four, section fifty-three of the national laws allows the department heads to accept a grant. They just can't expend the grant without the mayor and council approval.
So the Lawrence Fire Department, at this all the time that they got the grant because the grant was never submitted to the council, was never approved to the council, but they already spent the money.
Well, they expended, they expended other funds because we never set up the grant account. We don't set up the grant account until the council approves it. But what, pardon me, what happened was, I believe this is the grant where they spent some. They used some of their general operating funds, and we can get reimbursed for that through a grant. And I think that's, I think that's what we're here for. I believe they, they found that the grant, I guess it's an FY nineteen grant. They did expend the funds in accordance with the grant. They just didn't, we didn't charge that grant at all because we didn't, they found that it, I go to the council, get approvals. There was no grant account set up for it. So I believe that's the, it's kind of a correcting thing now. If we can get the grant approved, we can set up the account. We can make a transfer from the expense of the general fund to this grant account, submitted to the federal state government for reimbursement, and we'll get a check for, I believe it's the
Fifty-three thousand, fifty-seven.
That's basically what, what's happening. Is that right, Rosa?
Yes. But this is another question that the council members want to have is like, is that by doing this, this is, it's not coming back to us because maybe it was, you know, signed, it was suspended without notification. So we don't even know how that was suspended or what was suspended that.
Well, the purpose of the council is just to explain what the grant is for. And so that, I don't have the details, and Rosa does. And, and once the, once the department explains what the grant is for, what they plan on spending twenty-four, normally that's when the council approves those, the expenditure of those grant funds in accordance with the grant. So that's what we're asking the council to do tonight. It should have been done, I guess, a couple of years ago. But it's, it's still just the exact same process, nothing's changed. They, they never expended any grant funds. They spent general funds, which we, the federal government is willing to reimburse us for once we go through this process.
So then, now we get it, we're going to replace it, we're going to put it again back to the general fund.
To the general fund, right, to reimburse the general fund for basically grant funds that were, that were, before they, they were, grant funds were made on behalf of the grant. So they just used their existing funds instead. They substituted general fund, operating funds for the grant. And now they can get rid of it.
Rosa, would you be able to do a statement to the council? Why the grant, for what we got the grant, how it was, how that was suspended? You know, what happened other than, so how they would know what's going on? We listed the grant specifically in seventy-seven, and we, when we applied the grant, we talked about whether it's equipment, to where you're fed, to buy a car vehicle, to the build, to the build, yeah, with the upgrade. So what we, what we budgeted this grant was to buy a more cruiser with the upgrade on the vehicle, and that's why we used the grant. So usually, when you submit a grant, when you apply the grant, you have to let them know what, how, how it would be going to use. So, do you mean there should be like a big voices from that line? Um, maybe that have a relationship with you? Yes, you do, we do have a relationship. Would you be able to, or some of the expenditure of the grant, how we want to spend it?
I'll say, Counselor, thank you. Counselor Del Rosario, excuse me.
Thank you for your, Mr. President. How can a grant be expended without even having the grant? You look like, for a grant, without knowing if you're going to get a grant, and you want to go ahead and spend the money, assuming that you're going to get the money. How, how will that, that's what I don't know.
I think in this particular case, if I remember it, the police department purchased, I believe, five cruisers, five or six cruisers at once. One of them can be reimbursed by the grant. So that's, I notice, I just want to reiterate for the council, no grant account gets set up until the clerk records the vote of the council. Then it comes to the council, and we set up the account. So that's our, that's our control to make sure no department expends grant funds first. In this particular case, they were, bought some cruisers out of the general fund, and then they have a grant that they can get reimbursed. Those should have been charged back a few years ago, they went through this process, but because whatever reason, didn't happen. They caught the error now, or trying to close out this grant, the funds are available. And if we can get the council to approve the expenditure of a grant funds for a cruiser in accordance with the grant agreement, I think we can get fifty-seven thousand.
Is there an expiration date on that grant?
Is that getting up?
Was there an expiration date on that grant?
Not sure.
They usually have, yes. They have a deadline.
Yeah, we do have a deadline. It's like, five hundred thousand and twenty-two.
So we expended the funds, was it twenty-two or twenty-three?
This is the middle twenty-two.
Okay, so in twenty-two, the funds were expended. So we're within, they expended it within the grant period.
Yeah.
We're, we're kind of coming back in twenty-three, right? But FY twenty-four now, to correct the administrative error that we made by not doing it earlier. We still fall by some of the grants.
Any other questions? Just one thing as well, Counselor Levy, I think that there's some of this stuff that you were looking for. I think you might be able to find some of the invoices inside, inside the package. So, but if that's not satisfactory enough, I'm sure that.
Yeah, I think so, that is part of the thing that we asked, we sent it. That's what you sent it down. I was sending it down. Yeah, we just finalized the report. But the mayor, one of the major concerns was that how they extended the grant, at the speed of the grant, it was coming in front of us. It's the money that was used, how they used the money, how from what account that was taken the money. So that is all about, all this question that I, when she talked about that this from 2019, and so know the council knew about this.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, thank you. I'll call the question. First, before we do that, will the clerk please call? That's right, please call attendance for Counselor Selena Reyes.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Present.
Thank you. This is a committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Now I'm looking for a motion.
Please.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Counselor Stephanie Infante, discussion. See no discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. We are, let's talk the order to the chair. Let's go back, I think we got enough, right? Can we go back to the lady? Lady school, we got enough. We're gonna, we have enough for lady school. So, we need six, seven. We need seven people, six votes, six votes, right? We have six votes? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Yes.
One, two, three. Guys, it's the high math that throws me off. Thank you. If there's no objections, we're going to go back to public now. We need six votes for this?
Yes, I'm going to be right, yes.
Okay. At this point, I'll ask the clerk, if there's no objections, we'll ask the clerk to read the public hearing. There was two twenty-six, twenty-three.
Document number two.
Should we start with a motion, and we consider, please, to get that far? I'm thinking that might be necessary.
Yes.
Okay. Counselors, because we have, because there is going to be a revote on this matter, we need to make a motion to reconsider, which requires us to suspend our rules to allow us to take a vote this evening. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to, to have this vote this evening. There are motions.
A motion.
Motion made by Counselor Infante, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. At this point, I'll need to call the roll for this. And I'm going to need to have the vice president here for this vote. I'm going to need to have the vice president here for this vote. I need you for this vote, we're doing a roll call. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Counselor Infante.
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez is noted as absent. Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Delacruz is noted as absent. Counselor Levy.
Yes.
Counselor Vice President.
Yes.
Counsel President Laplante. You cannot vote, I apologize. You have to.
We have the required number for six at this point. Now, I'm looking, at this point, to reopen the public hearing for that. So now, clerk, now would you please read the public hearing notice? And we will have a vote on this matter.
Document number two twenty-six dash twenty-three. Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August first, 2023, at seven o'clock PM in the city council chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Act of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person in the city council chambers and remotely via Zoom. Received access codes of mobile participation, contact city clerk at nine seven eight six two zero three two three zero prior to the meeting. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the loan order amendments for the Leahy Elementary School. Order. That order number twenty-four dash twenty-two of the city council passed on February fifteenth, 2022, authorizing funding for Leahy Elementary Project is hereby amended to increase the amount of appropriations in borrowing authorization by $12 million to cover increased costs of the project by replacing language of the original order number twenty-four dash twenty-two with the following. Orders. That the city hereby appropriate $114,223,416 the cost of construction of a new Leahy Elementary School located at 100 Irving Avenue in Lawrence, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs related to designing the project, demolishing the existing building, equipping and furnishing the school, site improvements, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. Parentheses, the quote, project, end quote, and friends. Which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of the school's children of at least fifty years, and for which the city may be eligible for grants from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the school building committee that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to general law, chapter seventy B, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bond or notes of the city thereof, and if the city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. If any project cost the city incurred in excess of the grant approved and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city. That any grant that the city receives from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of eighty percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. That the amount of the borrowing authorized by this order shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in and received pursuant to the project funding agreement executed between the city and the MSBA. Further orders that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate official of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, to qualify under chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any and all bonds of the city authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order, and provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection herewith. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on time? See none, the public hearing is now closed. Counselor?
Motion to approve and wait the thirty days.
Right.
Motion made by the vice president, seconded by Counselor Anna Levy, discussion. See no discussion? I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll. By the way, Mr. Ianelle, I just want to make sure sometimes that there needs to be some magic words for the bond, the bond attorney. And I just want to make sure this motion captures that. Do you have that?
The motions, the first time around, the five, which is what you said.
So the motion is going to be a motion to acknowledge the certification of the capo and accept the loan amendment as published. And wait the thirty-eight.
Yes.
And that is the motion accepted by the vice president. She's nicked it and seconded by Counselor Levy. So now I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy.
Yes.
Counselor Delacruz is noted as absent. Counselor Russell.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez is noted as absent. Counselor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Infante.
Yes.
Counselor Vice President De Sela Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor President is noted. Motion carries after six votes.
Six votes has been cast, has been bonded authorization, once the meeting is approved. Madam Chair.
Yes. I have a couple items that I wish to take that I've ordered from the audience committee.
Sure, I've, I've got people that are here, that I've got a list for.
Yeah.
You want to go through them then?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The first one is document two eighty-one twenty-three. Festival, Ojulio Puertoqueno, it has been sent from O'Neil Park to Manchester Park, same day, same time, twelve PM to ten PM, August thirteenth. It has been sent out with a favorable recommendation, and I made that as a formal motion.
Motion is made, seconded by Counselor Infante, discussion. See no discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
Two, the next document is two eighty twenty-three. Health connection enrollment, hospital enrollment on eleven, eleven AM to sixteen AM, August twenty-sixth. Also has been sent out with favorable recommendation, all the supervisors in order. And I made that as a formal motion.
Motion made, seconded by Counselor Infante, discussion. Seeing that there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it.
So I just want to ask the gentleman in the back, what is your item number?
I'm just making sure to watch.
Easy to watch, okay. So I think, okay. I just want to make sure, I don't want it to be spent all night if you didn't have any, or you have any others. Okay, so that's all I have, I can continue with my audience if you want to.
So what we'll do is we'll go in order. We'll do the budget and finance committee stuff first, and then we'll go right in order. So Madam Vice Chair, are you prepared to continue with document two sixty?
I don't know, sixty twenty-three is the authorization to expand the grant funds in the amount of $153,000 from National Council of, on A, N, P, O, A, B, C. Mark Cabello, Director of Jersey, was the general of the council with favorable recommendation.
Motion is made, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Del Rosario, discussion. See no discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Document number two sixty-one, Madam Vice Chair.
Document two sixty-one twenty-three is a favor of your here invoice to Mister Arcandar. So the city authority, you know, they hope that he's saying back to our correspondent state that was okay to waive this. And I, so I have a formal motion. Second.
Yeah, okay. You got it. The motion has been made and properly seconded. The chair will recognize that Mr. Del Rosario is recusing himself from this vote and will not be present for this vote. Is there any discussion on this matter? See none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. We barely got that one, sir. All right. Document number two-sixty-eight?
Item two-sixty-eight-twenty-three is the decision to extend the funds in the amount of six thousand dollars for funding a child development grant submitted by Janey, Janey Abreu, that is the library director, was sent there with, to the school council with favorable recommendation, and I view it as a formal motion.
Second. Motion's been made by the Vice Chair, seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document number two-seventy-five?
Document two-seventy-five-twenty-three is a proposal for hobby, art, payment to Lawrence resident in the amount of one hundred dollars. Per person, was submitted by Councilor Richard Rosa, and it was sent as a committee report, and I view it as a formal motion.
Motion's been made as a committee report, seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. Discussion on the committee report? Seeing no discussion on the committee report, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. I'm now looking for a motion. There's not a lot of motions we could make on this because we can't, as you all know, we cannot, we cannot initiate any kind of payments, right? That comes, that's, that's responsibility of the executive branch. You can certainly discuss it, but if somebody wants to make a motion to withdraw, we can send a letter. Several things we can do, but we can't actually take affirmative action on a matter that's an expensive money. So I'm looking for a motion.
So what would it be, I'm sorry, sorry. So what would it be the most, the options that we have in order for, for us just to move the item forward?
Of course, you can always table the, that's number one. It's not, but it's not going to go anywhere because you can't act on it later anyway. Number two, you can make a motion to withdraw. Somebody wants to make that motion to withdraw, you can do that. Motion number three, I think, is if we want to this group to send maybe a letter of some sort to the, to the mayor, if that's what the group wants to do, we can do that. And then, at some point, decide we need to be withdrawn because we have no authority.
Okay, I can make a motion. Motion to send correspondent to the mayor's is to ask the proposal by Counselor Rich Russell, and also to withdraw the, the item.
Motion's been made by the Vice President, it's been seconded by
I would like to make.
by, by, by Counselor Infante. Discussion? Counselor Levy?
Yes, I think so that also we need to send a correspondent to the capo. That was one of the recommendations that I forget when you said to send it to the mayor. But also we were supposed to send it to the capo. We got how that form is going to be on request or used in the, the.
You send it to the mayor, mayor talks to Sunday.
So the motion apparently is to send it to the mayor, who apparently will then at that point advise the capo of whatever, I guess, if that's the point here, which is fine.
So no, she said that we also add into correspondent capo, so.
Okay. Copy the capo?
The capo.
So the motion includes a copying of Mark Ianelle with capo. Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Council President. The, the hundred dollars for person was just an avatar figure I pulled out of, out of the year. It, it could be, it could be ex-negotiable, in my estimation. You could get down to fifty dollars, twenty-five dollars. But I feel that the people, the citizens of Lawrence that were subjected to standing in, pulled in the line, dead in winter, to, to get a COVID test, or to have COVID shots, are deserving of something. I mean, some of you heard my diet drive about the way COVID money is being wasted on various projects. I feel that I'm here to represent the citizens. I'm trying to do that, by getting them something to show them for going through the aggravation of the, the past several years with the COVID epidemic. So, like I said, the hundred dollars is not etched in stone. It is, it is a, it is a figure that could be determined at a later date.
A hundred for the one who waits to get probably three times, so I'm unsure of the.
Okay. Counselor Del Rosario?
Thank you to you, Counsel President. I, I know there's no language on this item, but, I mean, it's five in my family. Would be a conflict of interest if I presented myself when I was getting high and got a shot, fell and shot in the kids. So would I be part of the citizens that would benefit from that? Would create a conflict of interest by getting money from the city to do this?
This is a hypothetical. You, you, you make, you made a point, but it is a hypothetical because, like, you can't, you can't, you can't vote on this. We cannot vote on this.
I understand, but I mean, this, and I know there's, there's no, there's not the war money, and we're not probably not going to vote on it, we're going to get, but we got to start thinking of that if it comes back to us. Because some of us here sitting here are looking for conflict of interest or any little thing to put out. So before you decide you're going to give the city, the whole city money, because we were there, you got to bring all that into consideration. It's five people in my family right now, and we've all made, and I'm a city council. We're going to get back on the dollars. Would be a conflict of interest. So all that, when you decide you're going to give money out, you've got to give it into consideration. And also, if eventually it comes back, you also got to think of, how are you going to distribute that? Would it be, would it be via tolling tubes, all that nice stuff? Would it be taxable? All that good stuff. But I mean, it's a great idea, probably not presented the way we should be presented, but it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, but it needs to be better presented because to distribute your money, you need to have an idea how you're going to distribute the money. In, in the way that we live now, in Lawrence City, every one of us is looking for the other one. You're grabbing apples and tell you took an apple without permission. Wrong. That's it.
Vice President Reyes?
Which is why I just want to answer to Counselor Del Rosario, which is why we're not going to be able to take any votes. What we are doing is, is just to say, correspond, that this is only a petition that could be not gone anywhere. Can be stayed where it is. The danger was present, but that's it. We are going to do it. But thank you for the clarifications because I can count to how much I'm going to be getting them.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on this matter, I'll ask, I'll, I'll, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. That was.
That was set for.
That was the budget finance. Okay. Do you want to go, Madam Vice Chair, or Chair, she's in ordinance.
Yes, I'm going to take it as a block, and I'm going to be one-on-one, but I'm going to make only one motion. All the items that I'm going to be reading from first is going to be forward law. Document one-ninety-seven, three-eight, three oh eight, fourteen, three oh nine, fourteen, four oh six, sixteen, four sixteen, fifteen, four seventeen, sixteen, eighty-one, seventeen, eighty-nine, seventeen, one twenty-one, seventeen, two ninety-eight, seventeen, seventy-two, eighteen, seventy-seven, eighteen, ninety-two, eighteen, one twenty-three, eighteen, one twenty-five, eighteen, one forty-two, eighteen, one forty-nine, eighteen, two oh nine, eighteen, two thirty-one, eighteen, two thirty-two, eighteen, two ninety, eighteen, three ten, eighteen, three thirteen, eighteen, three fourteen, eighteen, three twenty-seven, eighteen, three thirty-two, eighteen, three forty-six, eighteen, three forty-seven, eighteen, three forty-eight, eighteen, three fifty-seven, eighteen, three fifty-eight, eighteen, three fifty-nine, eighteen, three sixty, eighteen, as a block.
Madam Chair, before we, before I, I look for a second on this. I concur and think that the idea about putting this in the block is, would be a good idea. I do think as a chair that would be, would be improved. I hate to say it, but we should actually, we need a very small line there, so the public understands that it's not just.
Why, I'm going to do that.
As long as it gets done at some point.
Oh, no, no, no. It's going to be, and then I'm going to make one block, one motion.
That's right. Okay. So there was a motion to put this all on blocks, seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. I guess this is just putting it on block. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Madam Chair?
One-ninety-seven, double code location review, review. Three oh eight, Hillside Avenue, one-way traffic. In Street, one-way traffic. Four oh six, excavation permit process and re-inspection review. Four sixteen, approval for review and place nine Gail Court as a public way. Four seventeen, approval in Venement Street as a public way. Eighty-one, eighteen, traffic management during construction in the city of Lawrence. Eighty-nine, gas lift, prepare and emergency respond. One ten twenty-one, stop sign for a waste stop, corner of Felix Street and Bailey Street. Two ninety-eight, removal of Lawrence Public Works site at Water Street and Marble App. Two seventy-two, eighteen, Jamaica and South Union Street zoning decisions review. Seventy-seven, Buka subdivision and city establishment. Ninety-two, free amendment on ordinance update to Collins Establish Free. One twenty-three, no parking in front of Saratoga, one seventy, Saratoga Street. One seventy-five, updating housing code. One forty-two, transit rental license, thirty thousand street. One forty-nine, absentee lender in Lawrence. Two oh nine, parking forty-seven, going in street, ten minutes. Two thirty-one, parking two twelve, Blue Street. Two thirty-two, eighteen, Nicolas Albo, Daily Health Center, three thirty-three, Broadway Street. Two ninety, Jim O'Neil Memorial Park, amendment of the city zoning, zoning ordinance map. Three ten, putra informant mayor. Three thirteen, office of the city attorney requests to amend the city ordinance requiring installation, requiring installation of automatic sprinkle for all new and sustainable rehabilitated building. Fourteen, parking two ninety-six street, fifty minutes in front of Turn Ave. Three twenty-seven, election stop hiring and salary. Two, three thirty-two, parking two fifty-one, Broadway, fifty minute park. Three forty-six, one-way street, six street to Sanders Street. Three forty-seven, going zone from one twenty-one, X Street. Three forty-eight, stop sign, Hamster and Alder Street. Three forty-seven, three fifty-seven, Bay Road Street, corner of Haven Street, to install set of light. Three fifty-eight, parking some set tab, one side only, from Lawrence to Street On. Three fifty-nine, no parking in front of ninety-three Greenwood Street. Three sixty, Willow Street, one side parking from Center Street to the blue line. And two seven, okay, three sixty, okay. So all that is to withdraw, and I make formal motion.
Motion made, I believe, was seconded by Counselor Selena Reyes. Discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Okay. My next item is two-eighty-twenty-three, health connection enrollment, oh no, we did that.
Two-seventy-nine.
Two-seventy-nine. Thank you, Counselor Levy. Foundation cambiando el mundo de personas discapacitadas. No, disability, the export resource fair, Cameron common, ten A M to four P M, August twelfth. Fundación cambiando el mundo de personas discapacitadas has been sent out with favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion made, seconded by Counselor Levy. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Two-eighty-two. Charter and title license review, is also has been sent out with favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion made, seconded by Counselor Levy. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Under old business, it is available for us to now to take out of the committee. So I'm going to look to the Vice Chair of the Budget Committee to see if she wishes to make a motion to discharge document two-sixty-seven-twenty-three from the Budget Finance Committee.
So item two-seventy-two-sixty-seven-twenty-three is the decision to expand funds in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred thirty, uh, that is from Mass, those, I wrap one. Was submitted by Adam McCarthy, Director of the Planning and Development, so it is, I submitted for.
I believe you're looking for motion to discharge out of the Budget Committee.
Second.
Motion made to discharge by the Vice Chair, seconded by the Vice President. Discussion under discharge. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Delacruz? Got noted as absent. Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez? Noted as absent. Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Infante?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Estelario?
Yes.
Counselor President is not voting. Thank you.
He's not voting? Okay.
Okay, now that it's discharged, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve?
There was a motion to approve by the Vice President, seconded by Counselor Stephanie Infante. This, discussion, Counselor Infante.
President Laplante, I, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for their consideration on this, so this, this grant from the last dot, from the last dot is actually the money that we are, will be using to renovate the trail that we see on South Broadway on, uh, Beacon Street goes into the industrial park. That trail is being used by a company, um, Whitmore, uses that for inventory and is looking to actually expand that service for other businesses in the industrial park. And up to this point, he actually used fifty thousand dollars of his own money to maintain that network, so I thought that we're finally doing, we should do it in stages to be.
Very good. Any other comments on this? I just want to identify the current incumbent District E, very helpful on this, and try to say this as well, but very, very important on this. So, there's been a lot of District E power to put toward this, and it's finally getting to a, a good place. Seeing that there's no further discussion on this matter, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Any, any cable matters?
No cable matter.
Vice President speaks for everyone? There's no cable matters?
Yeah. I check with everyone. Counselor President, before we start reading the new business, I have a request. Counselor Selena, two ninety-two. Right? Can we create two ninety-three as an emergency? We're not going to have time to go around in this. Yeah, our next meeting is going to be the fourteenth, right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes.
That's two ninety-two.
Yeah.
Two ninety-two twenty-three.
Yes. Can we, uh, let it flow? So what do we have to do to? Can declare, I mean, there's notice here, you'll be declared an emergency today, but tonight? Yeah, to be able to vote tonight. And we can approve, I just can make.
I mean, six votes to declare an emergency and then another to approve.
We don't have it.
You declare an emergency, not a something.
Not to say.
We don't, we don't have it.
You have to declare it as, I believe you have to declare it as an emergency if you want to enact it this moment.
Yes, yeah.
So, and I think by default, just having it declared as an emergency, we don't send things to committees when they're emergencies. So, I think it's a simple, it is.
To declare an emergency.
Just declare it as an emergency.
Yeah, but then how many? We need, we need six.
You need six votes?
And we have six. So we have six. So motion to declare two nine, either two ninety-two as an emergency.
There's a motion to take document number two ninety-two to declare it as emergency for the convenience of the public. Is there a second for this matter? Seconded by Counselor Infante. Is there a discussion on?
Yes.
Discussion on the declaration of an emergency. There will be a second vote if this goes through to approve. Go ahead, Counselor Levy.
Thank you. I have a question. Because this is something, okay, so this item, and I is probably the person that is related to this. It said that, it's nothing that is going to be, it's going to be in the file, but I don't use it, it's, uh, it's like a junk sale, total stupid. Though he still need to have this in here, or we can do it without.
He still has it.
I told him that, yes, but he wanted to make sure. I said, I don't think so that we need to bring this in front of the city, but that was.
So you, uh, Mr. President?
Counselor Reyes?
Yeah, that's a reason, uh, Yeah, that's a big, uh, the pastor called Estelle nine and asking to support this item. That's why we presented it to nine as a
No, no, I, I, I understand. He called me also for the same thing, just to support this. I said, I don't have a problem. Just only ask the city whether he needed to bring it in front of us anyway.
I'm looking at Councilor Delverzaria.
Me assuming, I'm assuming that he needs the approval because he's using the park. That's why we
That's what I, I said, right.
So this should be to us, want to use the park.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I want to ask my phone because we using the park, but we don't do this here.
Councilor Delverzaria, do you wish to speak some more on this matter?
Yes, you want to come put this up, you know? And then it's, he, he come into us, into the fact that he's using the park, because yes, yes, he's going to use the park. I'm also
So the, I, I would just, I, I can't vote on this. I just want the council to consider one thing, which is this, is that I, we do not have a schedule for, uh, parks or any parks for that matter.
They already checked.
And they've checked, so that's important that we
They good to go, they good to go.
Yes, they are ready.
They good to go, yes.
Okay, so there's a motion
Motion to approve.
There's no, there's a motion to declare an emergency.
We already did it.
We haven't had the vote yet.
No.
I want to ask for a roll. If there's no further discussion on this, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Council, Council Infante?
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Council Delverzaria?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez is noted as absent. Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Delacruz is noted as absent?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President is not voted.
It is now declared an emergency. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute.
Second.
No, you don't need to wait thirty days, so
Motion made by Councilor Delverzaria, seconded by Councilor Infante.
Do your homework.
Counsel, Counselor Infante, is there any discussion on this matter?
No discussion.
This just needs five votes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
You have an extra one.
The ayes have it. Alright, now we're going to go to new business. Uh, two eighty-five twenty-three, G Group Transportation LLC, approval of delivery license going to the ordinance committee. Document two eighty-six twenty-three. A request for traffic study, intersection of Summer Street and Union Street. That's going to the ordinance committee. Document two eighty-seven twenty-three, no parking either side of driveway. One thirty-one dash one thirty-three Bennington Street is a city-owned vacant lot put on by Council Vice President Estela Reyes is going to the ordinance committee. Document two eighty-eight twenty-three, no parking either side of driveway, one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine Bennington Street, city-owned vacant lot, is put on by Council Vice President Estela Reyes is going to the ordinance committee. Document two eighty-nine twenty-three, removal of one handicap parking space at fifty-three Bradford Street. It's going to the ordinance committee. Document two ninety twenty-three, handicap parking at nineteen Cannon Street is going to the ordinance committee. Document two ninety-one twenty-three, resident parking, Walmart Street. Um, that is going to the ordinance committee. Two ninety-two twenty-three, yard sale.
Nope.
We just did. Two ninety-three twenty-three, friendship get together, Monday, September fourth, twenty twenty-three, from ten to six PM at O'Connell Park. That is going to the ordinance committee. Two ninety-four twenty-three, camp Artemos art installation on September twenty-second to October twenty-ninth. Is that camp any uncommon? And that is going to the ordinance committee. Two ninety-five twenty-three, Minds with Purpose Basketball Tournament, Sunday, August twenty-seventh, from eight to seven PM. That's going to the ordinance committee. Two ninety-six twenty-three, hawkers and peddlers license is going to the ordinance committee. Two ninety-seven twenty-three, request to access sidewalk for produce display at one eighty-seven, one eighty-nine Lawrence Street is going to the ordinance committee. Two ninety-eight twenty-three, authorization to extend grant funds, council on aging. One hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. And there is a, a late file that will not be able to get because there's not seven votes for the late files. So two ninety-nine twenty-three will be placed on our next city council agenda for lack of seven votes. Uh, but I'm going to be asking for committee assignments. Please do not leave. Let's like finish one more thing after the committee assignment for that. Budget and Finance, you have one eye.
Uh, then, why are we going to, uh, also, um, the disposal of, that one is going to be Wednesday, next Wednesday.
That's right.
At seven.
That's right, you're on it, right?
Yeah, we're going to have this one to go.
Okay, so next Wednesday. Um, ordinance.
Let me ask my Madam Chair, are you going to be able to host this meeting?
No, not Tuesday.
A Tuesday?
No.
So if you want to do it another day, because I'm going
We can do it on Thursday.
Can you do it on Thursday? Because I'm going, I'm not going to be present. And since we have one member absent, we really need to, gonna ask this big guy to
What do you want?
Thursday.
What you want?
Next Thursday.
For George. Next Thursday. That would be August, what? August the tenth?
Yeah. Okay.
Seven PM? Okay, so it's ordinance, uh, personnel?
But, um, people will be away, so
We'll be served vacation, please.
Go ahead. Okay, what are you looking at?
We have a constantly fifteen, um, we go to Thursday the seventeenth.
Seventeen, seventeen, I'm, I'm going to be back fifteen, I'm not going to be
Thursday the seventeenth, that's the pub.
Okay, uh, how, how, housing, who's housing committee vice chair? There's nothing on housing, right?
They don't have ours.
Nothing, nothing on housing. Thank you. So that's it. So, so one of the things I wanted to say before we all left this evening. I usually talk about birthdays, right?
Yes.
So, and I didn't do this at the beginning, it's my birthday spot right now of the evening.
Yeah, please, it's his birthday.
Now, stop. Sir, counselors. Uh, James Higgins was a World War One guy and he died in the war in France. He's got a, a corner named after him on, I think it's, I forget, Jack, I think it's, it's a gazebo. And Charles Beard also has, uh, he died after the war. He was a World War One guy that was gassed and died after the war. But I want to let you all know that I've done a little bit of research.
Okay.
Now, there are been counselors. I hate to use the word fraudulent. Who said they had birthdays. And they weren't on the days that they said they were on. I don't want to point fingers. But I think we know. I have everybody's birthday. I will tell you that we have two very distinguished people among us right now. So I'm, now that I've got people's birthdays, we're going to be breaking them down by the season. The summer season, the fall season, the winter season, the spring season. And I do have some cake for those people. I don't want to mention names, but there's a big birthday that ends in a zero for Counselor, I'm not going to mention the, the first number, Counselor Levy. And then Counselor Russell is our most, is our most senior member, August seventeenth. August seventeenth. So I wish you all, and I
Your birthday and today
But we're trying
Today also, in the La Plana, Council President La Plana's birthday.
Today?
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.